We'll call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Joe Burna of the Bethel Baptist Church and that'll be followed by pledge of allegiance by Larry Jacobs.
Ladies and gentlemen, please bow for a prayer. Our heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of being here this evening to offer this prayer blessing for our town council. Our Father, we know that in order for these council members to be effective leaders that honor you and bless our community, that they should lead with honesty and integrity, humility, and the courage to live by godly spiritual convictions. Father, I believe that Mayor Skoug and the men and women of this council should understand that they've been elected and entrusted by the people of Prescott Valley to do all that they do in a manner that is in keeping with these virtues. Therefore, I pray, Father, that you will bless each of these leaders with the strength of character to demonstrate these virtues, give them the wisdom and integrity to do what is right, to do what is good for the people of Prescott Valley. I pray, Father, that these leaders will take seriously the stewardship responsibility of the position of authority as they do their work, and that they will always speak the truth and treat each other and all the people of our town with dignity, courtesy, and grace. Father, I pray that you will bless each of them with your presence every day, give them their desire to do what brings honor to you, what is pleasing in your sight, and what is good for the people of Prescott Valley. For we ask these things in Jesus's name, and everyone said, "Amen."
Would you please follow me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to our great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Okay, next is roll call, Diane.
Mayor Skoug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory is absent this evening, as is Councilmember Marshall, Councilmember Nye.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We move on to number five, scheduled announcements and presentations. The MPC Service Award by Carm Staker, we'll have to table that. I understand that Carm was unable to come, she's in the hospital. So we'll take that for next time. A B Student of the Month, Caitlin De Herrera. Mike.
Well, if you didn't know, this is the fourth week of the month, and this is when we commonly recognize our Student of the Month, and we're going to do that tonight. We're honored to recognize Caitlin De Herrera, and she's our Student of the Month for August. She's representing Bradshaw Mountain High School, as well as Rotary Club of Prescott Valley and the town of Prescott Valley. And we're very proud that she's here tonight because she demonstrates the fact that a lot of the students that we see every day, and may not understand what they're doing, but they, like Caitlin, excel in a lot of community activities, academic-wise especially, and other leadership skills that we appreciate. And we're honoring her tonight because she's been recognized for that honor. We believe that these students exemplify the values of Rotary Club, as well as the town of Prescott Valley and Bradshaw Mountain High School. And she does engage, as you'll hear from me, in a lot of activities, both at school and out of school. So I'll give you a little hint in terms of what those things are. One thing that I thought was interesting is she recognized her previous education, which I hadn't heard before, now that she reports her academic success started with Liberty Traditional School. So appreciate that thought. She's taken a lot of honor courses at Bradshaw Mountain High School over four years, especially in math, so I think she's become, if she's not already, a math whiz. And I can associate with that because my son is a math teacher. She participates in campus clubs, including Avid, Wrestlerettes. She pursues college courses at ERAU and through Upward Bound. I think that is through Upward Bound, ERAU. She's excelled in math in her school years, as well as writing skills, which I think has brought her to the front of, I guess, being recognized as an outstanding student. She's, as a sophomore, joined Mu Alpha Theta, which is a math honor society. She's a member of the National Honor Society. She's a member of HOSA, which we hear a lot about when we talk about Students of the Month, and that's the Health Occupation Students of America. And that's something that's done around the country, I think, and she's part of LINK and Stand for the Silence. So she gets involved in a lot of different things, other than academic work. As a junior, she took four advanced placement classes, including history. And history, I think she felt was a challenge. It was for me, but I love history. She's current president of the Bradshaw Mountain High School chapter of HOSA. And she does sing in her church choir for a weekly youth mass. And I think the principal, Court Miner, indicated that she was thinking about anticipating coming this afternoon, that she may be singing something for us. But thank God, you don't have to do that. So I'm going to turn it over to Court Miner, and he's going to give you a little perspective in terms of her academic achievements. Hopefully, I haven't given too much away. But I'm going to introduce Court Miner, Principal Bradshaw Mountain High School.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, distinguished audience members. My name is Court Miner. I'm the proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School, and I'm very privileged and honored today to bring Caitlin De Herrera as the Student of the Month from Bradshaw Mountain High School. Our Student of the Month is nominated by our staff, and normally, the staff saves the best for last, like April, May. But we received so many nominations for Caitlin, we couldn't ignore her here in August. But Caitlin's pretty phenomenal. I do not know when this young lady sleeps. She's taken nothing but honors and AP courses on her campus. As Mike had mentioned, she's involved with the Wrestlerettes, they help out with our wrestling program. She's involved with Upward Bound. When she gets her summers, she goes to Emory Riddle and takes college courses. So she loves learning. And she's done very well in the Emory Riddle math competitions. She's part of the Mu Alpha Theta, which is our math honor society, NHS, president of HOSA, as Mike had mentioned. And she's a big part of our LINK crew. And just to give you a quick background on that, our LINK crew are junior and senior leaders, eighty-five to a hundred of them, that welcome in all our incoming freshmen. And the Friday before school starts on Monday, these one hundred LINK leaders meet and adopt eight to ten freshmen. And they show them where all their classes are at, they show them where the lunchroom is, they show them where the bathroom is. And they do a bunch of icebreaker activities for the students. And then throughout the year, they check in with those freshmen to make sure they're keeping up with their grades and if they're having any troubles. And so again, I think that's a testament to Caitlin. Prior to tonight, I found out she's joined another club, which is the Interact Club. She's a member of that. And as I was talking with her, she's in the top three percent of her class with a 4.483, but she reminded me that she took summer college courses. Those aren't in yet, so she'll have a 4.6 GPA, which is pretty darn impressive. Again, she epitomizes excellence in our students at the high school, and it is my honor to introduce you to Caitlin De Herrera.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. Oh, hi. First and foremost, I want to thank the Rotary Club and the Prescott Valley Town Council for inviting me here tonight. It's an absolute honor to be in front of everybody right now. I'd like to thank Mr. Court Miner for being the most proactive principal I've ever met and making Bradshaw a place where I can truly flourish. I'd like to thank my counselor, Ms. Janice Wissell, for nominating me to be Student of the Month. She's been with me through high school for four years now. And most especially, I'd like to thank my family for being with me for every step of the way. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my mom, Mrs. Carrie Lindelte Herrera. She works at Bradshaw as a Spanish teacher.
I just briefly want to say that I'm very appreciative to Dan Streeter and Court Miner for making Bradshaw Mountain High School the place that it is. The culture of excellence has allowed Caitlin the opportunity to grow. She's always had potential, but that's given her the venue, the place, to take all of those challenging courses and do what she does. And I can't say enough about Ms. Wissell. She's an amazing academic advisor. She has spent so many hours reworking Caitlin's schedule to put in all the classes that Caitlin could take. And Caitlin, she's pretty humble and behind the scenes about things, but she always tells us at home, "I wish I could be a five-year senior mom, because there's so much more I want to do, and I just don't have any more time." So, you know, I'm very appreciative to the Prescott Valley Town Council and for Rotary to recognize her because she's very quiet and wouldn't be recognized if other people didn't do it. And most of all, I want to say thank you to my daughter for being the wonderful person that she is, because she's very intrinsically motivated. I don't ever have to push her. She pushes herself above and beyond at every turn, more than I could ever do if I was the one driving her. And it truly is an honor and a blessing to be able to be her mom. So, thank you all very much.
Well, it's a sincere pleasure that we recognize you tonight. And we wanted to give you a few things to remember this evening. And one is a certificate. And it indicates that the Prescott Valley Rotary Club, in conjunction with Bradshaw Mountain High School and town of Prescott Valley, designate you as the August Student of the Month. And we appreciate your hard work, and we expect you, this is kind of a ticket back to the community, that you come back and join us as a productive member of our community and lead us in our future endeavors. We're counting on that. And I have one more. It's a paperweight, as you're doing all your studies here and wherever the studies might take you. And it's just a paperweight that says, "Student of the Month, Prescott Valley, Arizona." So congratulations again.
Way to go. Well, congratulations, Caitlin. Keep up the good work. Okay, we move on to Chamber Commerce. Chamber Commerce. Zach, are you up?
Yeah, this is the Zach Attack. Good evening, council. I didn't realize I was going to be walking out. Caitlin, I will be calling you math tutoring. I'm starting up school, so, all right. All right. And I want to thank everybody here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to always come in here and introduce a new business. Today, I'd like to introduce Daniel Lee with Prescott Dirt.
How you doing? Daniel Lee, owner of Prescott Dirt. We recently moved here to Prescott Valley, right off Highway 69, next to the Napa Auto Parts. We also have a store in Prescott. We've been there for probably about twenty years. Happy to be here in PV now, offer good landscape materials, rock, dirt, sand, high-quality stuff, take care of people, make Prescott Valley look beautiful. Our phone number is 775-9030. We also have a really nice website at preskettdirt.com, and glad to be a part of this fancy town. We really like it.
Well, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
And also, wanted to remind everybody that the Home Health and Lifestyles Expo is coming up. That is September 12th and 13th. And we also have our quarterly breakfast coming up on October 6th. I guess it's not really coming up, but it is at the same time coming up. So definitely get in, call us at the Chamber, 928-772-8857, and get your seat for that. Should be a good one. And thanks again, town council. Always appreciate you guys letting us do this. Good night.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate that. Okay, we go on then to Parks and Recreation, new employee introductions, Megan Murphy and Adam Garner. Jason, you're up. Good to see you. Where are the guests of honor?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I get to do something that in ten-plus years I have never done before, which is introduce new staff. We have two individuals that have joined our team, Megan Murphy. She is from Sierra Vista, Arizona. She has a bachelor's degree from Penn State University and a master's from Arizona State. And Adam Garner, who comes to us from our own, well, OMI Water Department. And Adam is joining us with several years of experience in utilities in the irrigation field. So without further delay, I'll introduce Megan Murphy, so she can come up and tell you a little bit about herself.
Welcome, Megan.
Hi, nice to meet you guys. Like Jason said, I'm Megan Murphy from Sierra Vista, Arizona. And I'll just tell you some fun facts about myself, so you can remember me. I've broken three bones, my nose, my ankle, and my wrist. What can I say? And I like hiking, swimming, golfing. It feels really good to get a job in the field that I went to school for. It took a while there, you know, and college loans are expensive, so thank you, thank you for hiring me as a recreation coordinator. That was my dream job, and now I'm here. Also, I love Harry Potter, Game of Thrones, and Hunger Games, so if you want to talk to me about that, that's fine. And my goals here mainly are promoting a healthy, active lifestyle. I love doing 5Ks and things of that nature, and also promoting sustainability, recycling. So those are my two main focuses as your recreation coordinator. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan.
Hello. As Jason said, my name's Adam Garner. I'm the new irrigation technician. Like he said, I come from a distribution background, which happened to be here, so I know the system here pretty well. My goals are mainly water conservation and keeping everybody green. I've noticed that when things start to not be so green, people start calling. This time of year is really hard, so me and everybody else at Parks are working really hard to make sure that all of that stays that way, and we will keep doing so. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to the Volunteer Assistance Study Phase One Town Parks 2015 by volunteer Lisa Wells and Capital Projects Coordinator, Kim Moon.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. I have here with me this evening my volunteer, Lisa Wells, who did the Volunteer Asset Park Study 2015. And I'm going to hand it over to her here in a minute to give her an overview of the report that you have for you on your desk, and I'm going to pull up some pictures that she took of our parks. Lisa actually came in one or two days a week for over five months, and she checked out a town vehicle and camera and visited each park site. She worked on spreadsheets, reports, and she was in the workstation, first in the IT training room, and later she joined the executive management team in our area. She's been a valued member of our team, and it's a pleasure to work with her. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to her for a brief presentation, and I'll show you some photos.
Thank you, Kim, for that very kind introduction. It really was a walk in the park. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, thank you for having me here tonight. My experience with the Volunteer Central Program has been nothing but positive. Heidi's diligence and expertise was immediately apparent when I approached her to invest my time with the town of Prescott Valley. Heidi briefly looked over my expertise and background and immediately knew right away to call Kim. She pointed me in that direction. I called Kim. Kim was very patiently outlined the project, and we were on our way from there. The original vision of the project involved a team of volunteers, but with a little leeway and a few speed bumps, we were underway, Kim and I. They were, Heidi and Kim both were very gracious and grateful to have me, and it was a very positive experience the whole way. The project was very rewarding, fulfilling. I enjoyed each and every phase. Working with Kim was a very positive experience. I can't underscore enough the importance of the Volunteer Central Program to the town of Prescott Valley. Kim was a consummate professional, pleasantly down-to-earth, one of the most competent, edifying, and encouraging people I have ever met. Additionally, the value and potential of the Volunteer Central Program cannot be overstated. Within the community, there is vast knowledge, experience, and expertise available for a seemingly endless number of subjects and areas. The demographic of the town of Prescott Valley gives us access to so many people with years of experience, knowledge, and expertise in nearly every field imaginable. The best potential the town has for utilizing those resources is the Volunteer Central Program. People within the community that are looking for a way to give back or serve their community have an effective platform by which to do so. The town has a means by which to mine knowledge, experience, and expertise. The Volunteer Central Program is where those two needs met, and the result is a win-win. I want to switch gears briefly, and I'm just going to highlight three things that came out of this project that I had the opportunity to endeavor with Kim and people that we collaborated with within the town. While much of the data that's in the project that you have before you is already available, a lot of that data was scattered throughout, archived in old records, or mentioned in verbiage pertaining to other areas. This project has compiled a vast array of information into one database that puts useful and current information into the hands of anyone that can use this information. This resource may be useful to every department for some time to come. Every current and developed park that the town owns is included in the database. The data collected and included was chosen specifically to be useful, in some cases, useful in multiple ways. Bond ratings, grant writing, emergency services, park planning, GIS work, reference for the public are just a few ways this information can be valuable, because it's compiled specifically with time-tested usefulness in mind. This database is also a useful tool for maintenance and budget forecasting. While this database is a valuable resource for a host of potential users, it also can become a valuable tool. This database included twenty-four park facilities that the town currently owns and maintains. Within that comes no small task of property and facility maintenance. With a little adjustment here and a tweak there, this database could become a maintenance and budgeting tool for your leaders. This kind of compiled information allows a user to be proactive in how facilities are maintained. Labor costs, repair costs, service dates and schedules, replacement, forecasting, and interdepartmental communication can become more proactive. My experience has been that Brian Whitty, Jason Elmer, and their team do a phenomenal job with the enormous task of upkeep of all the properties for our public. My implication here is that the database can be a tool to simplify their job. And lastly, although not the last benefit of the project, but a third item I just want to highlight, this project can be a foundation with which to build on for several other projects. Additional projects that would build from this information would generate an enormous amount of information that would be useful to so many, from police and fire to planning and public works. The matrix of information that could be incorporated is almost endless. For example, a similar matrix of information about streets and infrastructure or emergency services assets could be generated. The real-time value and usefulness of this kind of tool is easily underestimated. So while this database stands alone as a valuable resource, it also serves as a potential cornerstone for additional projects that may return many times in value the invested man-hours for such an endeavor. With that in mind, I come back to the Volunteer Central Program as a resource to make that happen. The need for the man-hours and expertise is met with the Volunteer Central Program. The potential for accomplishment in every department may be realized with the effective and efficient mining of the resources. The Volunteer Central Program is so adept at joining the right people with the need the town may have. Thank you, Heidi, for your ability to marry what the town needs with those generous souls that give themselves in so many areas. Kim, it has been a pleasure. I am humbled to have been able to work with you these last six months. My hat's off to you. It's been great. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council for giving me just a moment to share with you what I've been able to gain from this opportunity to serve. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Kim, we appreciate you, and thank you.
I just, it's great, because you get somebody like Lisa, don't run away, Lisa, to give my speeches for me. Is she awesome? So I really want to thank Kim and Lisa both. Kim took a very complicated program and put it together, and Lisa put in the hours and the expertise to finish it. But the best thing is that it shows what our skilled volunteers can do, and we're looking forward to many more projects like this. So thank you very much.
Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Keep up the good work. Appreciate that. Okay, next we have Proclamations, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week. Can we meet you up here? Diane, do you have a proclamation? Can you read it?
Yes, I will, Mayor. Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week, August 31st through September 5th, 2015. Whereas National Guard and Reserve Forces comprise nearly half of our nation's military strength and are essential to America's national security, Reserve Component Forces stand ready to answer the call to serve, whether serving alongside active-duty counterparts all across the globe, or responding to humanitarian crises at home and abroad. And whereas employers provide critical support to members of the National Guard and Reserve, allowing citizen warriors to serve wherever the nation calls after foregoing financial gain and making sacrifices in the process. And whereas employer support is stronger than ever, more than forty-three years after President Richard Nixon authorized the Secretary of Defense to establish the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and the Reserve. And whereas our nation is in debt to the citizen warriors departing the comforts of home to ensure our freedoms remain intact, likewise, America pays special tribute to the commitment of dedicated and supportive employers who continue to make service in the reserve components possible. And now therefore, I Harvey C. Skoug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim August 31st through September 5th, 2015, as Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and thank all the employers who support our National Guard and Reserve Forces.
Thank you, Diane. Who can I introduce?
First of all, thank you, Mayor. My name is Larry Jacobs. I'm the area chair for Northern Arizona for the Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve. And with me today, I have Larry Gray, who is one of our Military Outreach Coordinators, and Tony Morrison, who is also one of our Military Outreach Coordinators.
Rick, any comments?
Well, from my own experience, some of the last years I spent on active duty was with the Nevada National Guard, and I know the importance that the ESGR does play. Without that support, we couldn't have the service that we have today. So it's very important, and I thank you for all that you do.
And who do we present the proclamation to? You, Larry? You handle it all. Good. Any other comments, Larry?
I'd like to say everything.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
First of all, again, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. I want to tell you just a little bit about who ESGR, the Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve, is, because a lot of times we don't ring our horn and people don't know who we are. But I guarantee you, if you're a member of the National Guard or Reserve, one of the seven components which we represent, they know who we are. As previously stated, we've been around since 1972, when they did away with the Soldiers' and Sailors' Relief Act, but we're involved in many different programs that support our citizen soldiers. Many people don't know, but our military is made strong because of our citizen soldiers. We have about a million that are full-time, and we have a million that are citizen soldiers. And again, they are in seven different components: the Army National Guard, the Army Reserve, the Air National Guard, the Air Force Reserve, the Naval Reserve, the Marine Corps Reserve, and finally, the Coast Guard. And one of the things that you don't know that we do is we work with these members and we work with the employers. And the way we work with them is to keep things going on an even keel, especially in the event that these people are called to serve. And just to give you an idea how many have been called to serve, since the incident that occurred on 9/11, to date, we have had, and our folks that are involved in our Military Reserve and National Guard Components, over 906,000 deployed. Many of those were in Iran and Afghanistan, and there's not a month that goes by that at least 24,000 of our citizen soldiers aren't deployed somewhere throughout the United States. We give them a lot of services. We have ombudsman services to work with differences that may occur between our employers and our guardsmen. We also have a Heroes-to-Hire Program where we focus on getting jobs for our folks that are in the Guard Reserve and our veterans. We don't forget them. We have a lot of different things that we do. And one of the unique distinctions that came out this year, we give probably 10 different awards that go from the Patriot Award all the way up to the Freedom Award. The Freedom Award, only 14 are given per year, and about 3,000 people are put in for that award, employers. And this year, two individuals, two employers out of Arizona got that award out of those 15, which is presented at the Pentagon by the Secretary of Defense, and those people also go over to the Oval Office and get to meet the President. So quite a distinction for the state of Arizona. And one final note, I'll just say, we have over 14,000 citizen soldiers in Arizona alone, and we really thank our employers for hiring these individuals and being supportive for them and their families when they are deployed to meet the needs of our nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry, and Larry and Troy. Tony. Tony, I'm sorry. We appreciate your coming here, and thank you for that. Thank you so much. Larry, thank you.
But, Mayor, don't leave yet because we're not done.
We're not done yet?
No, we're not done. What we also have is we have what's known as a Statement of Support that we give to employers, and we give probably somewhere in the tune of 20,000 of these a year. And this is one that has been made up for the city of Prescott Valley to thank them for the support that they give us to our Guard and Reserve Component Members, our citizen soldiers. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That's really nice. Thank you. We appreciate that so much. Okay, next, over Patriot Week proclamation. Gentlemen, who else coming up? Are you going to handle this all alone, Darlene, with all kinds of support? Do you have the proclamation, Diane?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Patriot Week, September 5 through 11, 2015. Whereas from the tragedy of September 11, 2001, a new spirit has arisen, a stronger sense of family, community, brotherhood, and patriotism, and we have come together as Americans. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations, now and forever, and whereas we wish to honor and remember all those who lost their lives and who have demonstrated the ultimate sacrifice for their country, and whereas we wish to honor and pay tribute to the men, women, and families who were affected in our own town, as well as those who worked so diligently to help our people recover. And whereas commencing September 5, 2015, with the opening ceremony and blessing of the Prescott Valley Healing Field of Northern Arizona, and concluding with the commemoration of the tragic events of September 11, 2001, the town of Prescott Valley will observe a week of activities to remember and honor the invincible spirit of America and its heroes. Whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11 through the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the advancement of patriotism and love of country, and the remembrance of those innocent victims who died September 11 as heroes, one and all. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do proclaim September 5 through 11, 2015, as Patriot Week, and September 11, 2015, as Patriot Day.
Thank you, Diane. Any comments, Vice Mayor? Okay, Darlene, you want to introduce everyone?
I do. I'm going to introduce my team. Part of my team. Heidi Foster, who is our PR person. Molly Ho-Ride, our volunteer chair. Jeremiah King with Controll Yabapai, who is doing the Patriot Run, and without Controll Yabapai, this would not happen. So I really want to thank them. And I have T-shirts for everyone.
And we have a proclamation to present to you. Any comments? 20 minutes. 20 minutes.
Shy people.
Thank you for having us this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Council, thank you for having us this afternoon. So from September 5 through September 11 is Prescott Valley Patriot Week. That's what this proclamation is about. There's four different events throughout the week. On September 5, there's the Blessing of the Field at 9:00 a.m. We're doing a fundraiser Patriot, the Patriot Run, starting at 9:00 a.m. here at the Civic Center. It's going to start and finish at the Healing Fields, to highlight the Healing Fields. And that is a fundraiser for the Central Yabapai Fire District Honor Guard. And then on the 9th, there's the Prescott Pop Symphony, going to be playing a patriotic concert, a patriotic concert. And then on the 11th, we're going to have our ceremony, our 9/11 Memorial Ceremony, at 6:00 p.m. And there's a children's chorus going onstage at 5:30 p.m. to sing patriotic songs as well.
Good. Good job. Now it's your turn. Anything else, Heidi?
We are so excited this year for Patriot Week and all the great events we're going to have, and I just really want to encourage everybody to come out, both to the concert. It's the first time the Pop Symphony has played a public concert here in Prescott Valley, so we're just thrilled that they want to come. It'll be the whole symphony. And I encourage everybody to come to the 911 event as well. So we hope to see you there.
Vice Mayor?
Well, this will be a truly great event. We've had our event typically over the last few years with the flags, celebrating for about a week at a time. But this week, or this year, we will have several events over several days. So I want to encourage everyone who's here, everyone who's listening, if you haven't been here before, it'll truly rock your world. You need to be out here and see this. It's a great event. The vision of these flags flying will stop you in your tracks. You need to see it. Thank you.
Yes, we do invite all of you to join. And keep in mind, our audiences, as we go year by year, our audience keep getting bigger, so join us. And thank you, Heidi, and thank you all so much. Darlene, keep up the good work, and all of you. Jeremiah, all of you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It should be reminded that the Pop Symphony is an outdoor event, and it's free.
And Laura? Mike?
Yeah, I have it on my calendar already. I can't wait to see all the festivities. Hope everybody's there to see it.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate that. Diane, thank you so much. (applause) Okay, now we move on to certificates. Five-year certificate of appreciation. Sean Caswell, for 15 years of service. And I think Diane might have a comment or two. Sean?
Actually, Lieutenant Stebbins is going to make the comments about police employees.
Mr. Stebbins, you're up. Hey, good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Anderson, Council, staff. It's, I'm really excited and honored to be able to present four, actually four, recognitions tonight, Sean being one of them.
Your day's coming.
I'll do them each separately, so. Sean is here, I will start with Corporal Sean Caswell. Corporal Sean Caswell was hired by Prescott Valley Police Department in August of 2000 and attended the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, class number nine, I believe. His assignments over the years have included Traffic Section, where he excelled as a motor officer and accident reconstructionist. His traffic enforcement efforts are legendary within the department. Sean has been a member of the Prescott Valley SWAT team for over 13 years and is currently serving as a team leader. His mechanical expertise on tactical SWAT vehicles has saved the department thousands of dollars in maintenance and construction-type costs. He is also a firearms instructor for the department. Sean is a senior field training officer for the department, and over the years has helped train many of the officers, some of whom you see out here in the audience tonight. Over the past 15 years, Corporal Sean Caswell has been the recipient of the department's life-saving award three times. He has been awarded the Police Star for bravery and exceptional tactics, and he was awarded the Officer of the Year. I present to you Sean Caswell.
Mr. Caswell, you want to respond?
Thank you for having me for 15 years.
Gee, that was quick. Vice Mayor?
Well, as always, we're so proud of our police department, and we want to thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and we heard, obviously, dedication, that's for sure. And thank you for 15 years, and you're young enough, you can do 15 or 20 more, so thank you. Thanks, Lon.
And with that, we have an appreciation award for the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Sean Caswell, in appreciation for 15 years of dedicated service, August 2000 through August 2015, and a pin with two emeralds, I guess, is that what they are, Heidi?
Yes.
Diamonds?
Diamonds.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service. Any other comments?
No, I'm good.
Come on over here and pose, huh? Maybe Chief, you have something to comment too, did you? Okay, great. One more session of comments.
Sean Caswell is somebody who I trained when I was a field training officer. He was probably one of the most eager learners I have ever had the privilege to teach, and he continues to be a student in his profession as a police officer, and he has served this community honorably. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, we'll move on then to Jenny Lacane. Jenny, you're here with some very special person. You want to bring him up too? Come on up. And Scott, you have any comments? Come on up, Jenny, don't be bashful.
Jenny Lacane has been with the town of Prescott Valley for 15 years, starting back in August of 2000. She worked in the town clerk's office for 11 of those years. We stole her from them, and she's been working with the Prescott Valley Police Department for four years. Her duties are mainly as an administrative assistant, taking care of all the required continuation and proficiency training hours that officers are required to complete on an annual basis. She sometimes feels like a travel agent because she has to reserve hotel rooms, register officers for seminars, and book airfares for specific trainings that they need in their field. Last year, 2014, she was selected by her coworkers as the Police Civilian of the Year. Jenny is married to Bruce and has two daughters, Renee and Amy. They have several horses at home, with many other animals to care for. They enjoy hiking and camping every chance they get and getting away from the mini-zoo from time to time. Jenny would like to thank the Mayor and Council and Chief Gerald for her many years with the town. She has made several lifelong friends and loves working for the community here in Prescott Valley. Jenny is a person of few words, but her actions speak volume. We're very lucky to have her. Jenny?
I just want to thank you for the opportunity to work for a great town. Thank you.
I thought you were going to speak for 20 minutes. Chief, you want to?
Jenny is one of three members of our Administrative Support, also known as Command Staff Assistance, and we could not do what we do as a department or as command staff without you, so thank you.
Jenny is the cornerstone to our family.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, we know we give a lot of credit to the police department, and it is well-deserved, but we know behind the uniforms, we have someone very special taking care of all the details. So thank you, and keep up the good work. You're doing a great job.
Chief, comments? No, no more comments? Okay. You going to take the picture, Heidi? You folks pose? Okay, we give you. You have a plaque there that's appreciation for the town of Prescott Valley, and we also have a pin for you. And this pin has two emeralds in it.
I'm wearing one.
You're wearing one? From which? Five years? 10 years? Go ahead. Okay, and you get this too, and I'm not sure what's in there, isn't it? But...
It's in there, sir.
Good, thank you so much, Jenny. Congratulations. Okay, next we have Mike Morris, 15 years of service.
Sergeant Mike Morris started his career with Prescott Valley Police Department in August of 2000. He completed the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, class number nine. As a patrol officer, he quickly developed a passion for DUI enforcement, which led to his becoming a drug recognition expert, a certified phlebotomist, and an assignment to the Traffic Section as a motor officer. Mike's accomplishments during this time included over 300 blood draws, 125 drug recognition evaluations, becoming a drug recognition expert instructor, over 150 DUI arrests. He issued over 1,500 criminal traffic citations, investigated over 300 traffic collisions. Certification, he became certified as an accident reconstructionist, and he is a three-time recipient of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Officer of the Year. Drunk Driving Officer of the Year Award. Mike was promoted to corporal in 2006 and was assigned to Patrol Division where he immersed himself in the department's community policing efforts. He trained in areas such as crime prevention, neighborhood watch, and problem-solving approaches to public safety issues. In 2009, Mike was assigned to the Traffic Division again, where he was instrumental in writing several successful Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grants. The department received 22 portable breath testers, 15 radar units, two in-car camera systems, three fully-marked police motorcycles, a phlebotomy chair, and over 125,000 in overtime monies for DUI and speed enforcement. In March of 2013, Mike was promoted to the rank of sergeant and assigned to patrol. For the past year and a half, Mike has also been a field training unit sergeant overseeing new recruits and lateral officers. Sergeant Morris is also a lead instructor at the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy where he teaches such topics as traffic enforcement, DUI investigations, high-risk stops, and law enforcement tactical driving. He routinely speaks at Matforce Victim Impact Panels to youth and young adults on the risks and consequences of substance abuse. Sergeant Morris has been married to his beautiful wife Shay for 19-plus years and they have three children, Ryan, 14, Hannah, 12, and Kylie, 9. They are in the audience. So I present to you Sergeant Mike Morris.
I have to limit you to 20 minutes, Morris.
No, I just want to say thanks. 15 years makes me feel old now, I guess. I've been here a while, so, you know, I feel like I'm at a Grammy Award every time I'm up here with you. I feel like I got to give a speech, but just thank you to my beautiful wife and my kids. They're my support system. They're sitting right here, yeah. And then the great peo- She's not feeling well. She's going to sit down. And then also the guys that are out here, these are my second family, so they're the ones that make this job exciting and enjoyable. So, thank you guys.
Mike is a great example of what leaders do at our agency. You heard about all the things that he did as an officer and on his way up through the ranks, and now as a sergeant, he does a lot to give back to the community and to the troops that he leads. And I know they trust him and he trusts them. So, thank you, Mike.
We have a plaque, appreciation word from the town of Prescott Valley in appreciation for 15 years of dedicated service, August 2000 to August 2015. The plaque, the pin, and the $125, is that gift or check? Gift certificates. So, thank you so much. By the way, Jenny got one and so did Sean. Now you have to pose for a picture. Thank you so much and congratulations. Jeremy Martin, your next wife, family, kids, whoever. Come on up. Scott, you have some comments?
Jeremy's getting to be a frequent visitor here. Over the last three months, this is his third visit. Police star last time? Yeah, and, you know, he's promoted in May, so he's a frequent flyer here. Sergeant Jeremy Martin has been a police officer for 14.5 years. That includes time with Mesa Police Department as well, and he has been married for 13 years to Lauren and has a 10-year-old daughter Kate and a seven-year-old son Nicholas. He attended and graduated from Yavapai College with an associate degree and from Arizona State University with a bachelor's degree in Justice Studies with an emphasis in sociology. His first, or he first began his law enforcement career in March of 2001 with Mesa PD. In 2005, Jeremy lateraled from Mesa PD to Prescott Valley to be closer to his family. In January of 2009, Jeremy was selected to be a detective with the department's Criminal Investigation Section. Jeremy was part of CIS for three years until he was promoted to the position of Police Corporal on January 1st of 2012. In May of 2015, Jeremy was promoted to the rank of sergeant with the Prescott Valley Police Department. During his 10 years with the police department, he has taken on numerous ancillary duties to include NARDA, which is Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy mentor, field training officer, range safety officer, physical fitness instructor. He's a member of the Uniform Committee, Health and Wellness Committee, and lead field training officer. Jeremy would like to thank the town of Prescott Valley and Prescott Valley Police Department for 10 meaningful years as an employee here. I present to you Jeremy Martin.
Thank you.
20 minutes, but with that, we give you a plaque, appreciation award of the town of Prescott Valley for 10 years of dedicated service, August 2005 to August 2015. The pin and... Those two items. And Chief, any comments?
One of the things that was mentioned in Jeremy's biography is his physical fitness instructor certification. He takes that, I think, to another level. He spent a lot of time with the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy entering and training recruits from across the state in physical fitness. He himself has a very strong passion for fitness and he is currently bringing that passion back to the police department, leading a team of future physical fitness instructors and passing that torch along, so good job.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to Jeremy and to all of our recipients tonight. We're very proud of all of you. Jenny, you too. You're right up here among the group and we're so proud of all of you tonight. So, thank you very much. Thank you for being part of our town and we look forward to continuing being with us. Thank you.
Council, any comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's very interesting to get a profile of our four employees and the fact that they come together like a puzzle, I think, in terms of the expertise they bring to our agency, the police department. And it's very, you know, I'm very pleased to see that we have employees that are working 15 years or more and look forward to working much, many more years, I think. And it's a testament to our town that they want to stay here and the leadership of the agency. So, we appreciate their commitment and we appreciate the leadership of the police department.
Good, thank you. Laura?
We love this opportunity to honor you and just love the numbers, 15, 10. That's one of the reasons we have such an outstanding department. I see, head shaking back there. We humbly thank you for what you give to our community. And we also know that you happen to be great husbands and fathers. You've got the whole package and, boy, that's rare. Humbly thank you.
Marty?
It's always nice when we're able to honor our staff and our police officers for years of service and it's a great testament to the town and our community that our police officers stay on for 10 and 15 years in their careers and they look forward to coming to work every day. So, I, it's said often and we can't say it enough, what a great community this is and what a great community is to work for. Prior to coming onto the council, I used to see them walk across the stage and when I was working, I never got honored the way we honor our employees for their years of service. I think it was 25 years before they even gave me a pin, you know, and, you know, to see it happen here as often as it does, and we all, you know, we honor them at five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and on top of it, we also throw them a nice retirement party. So, I think, I think it's awesome. I'm glad that I live in this community and I'm glad that we have the quality of officers and police and staff that we do have here. So, thank you very much and it was nice to see so many being awarded tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Those four employees total 55 years of service to the town of Prescott Valley and we certainly want to thank you and tell you how much we appreciate our good police department. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. My right chair. Okay, we got one more item here. That's council announcements and comments. Any, any for the council? If there is no more, we'll move on to number nine, which is our consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda will be considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. The approval of the August 13th council minute meetings, council meetings, approving the June 9, 2015 Board and Commission Selection Committee regular and executive meetings, approving the routine destruction of records, approving the TPT quarterly tax report, approving the accounts payable, and approving, approving the agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish Department to participate in Fane Lake Settlement Mitigation Project. NG is approving a right-of-ways for Glassford Hill Trail Project from the Arizona State Land Department for the sum of $167,826. Council want to pull anything or do you want to prove it as a whole?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda by voice vote.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson, or Vice Mayor Anderson, excuse me?
Yes.
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you. We move on to number 10, old business. Consideration of reading ordinance number 807 by title only, then places the same, on the final passage, adopting amendments to Town Code, Chapter 2, Mayor and Council. Diane, do you have any comments on that one?
Nothing beyond what we talked about last meeting, Mayor. This basically just more housekeeping changes to keep up with some of the legislative changes that have come down over the past year, which have now been incorporated into Town Code.
Well, we got to thank our legislators. They do all kinds of things to make it easier for us. The harder they work, the more they impose on us. Any comments, questions? If not, I would ask Diane to read the ordinance number 807 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 807, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the town of Prescott Valley, Aminiscible Corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Chapter 2, Mayor and Council, declared by Resolution Number 1925 to be a public record, which amends Section 2-01-040 Vacancies in Council and 2-01-070 Bond in Article 2-01 Council, Sections 2-03-010 Primary Election, 2-03-030 General Election Nomination, 2-03-040 Election to Office, 2-03-50 Candidate Financial Disclosure, and 2-03-060 Nomination Materials in Article 2-03 Council Election, and Sections 2-06-030 Time of Filing Petitions, and 2-06-040 Statement and Circulator's Affidavit in Article-2-06 Special Elections in Chapter 2, Mayor and Council of the Town Code, to conform to recent Arizona statutory revisions and otherwise update the code, providing that all other articles, sections, and subsections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
That was just one sentence, Diane.
Yeah, I had to take a breath in the middle, did you notice?
Okay. Well, with that, if there's no more questions, I'll ask, shall the ordinance pass? Would you call the vote?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. That passes. We move on then to number 11, new business, consideration of approving the reappointment of Cal Nye to the Building Board of Appeals. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Just a moment. Okay. On September 5, 2015, Cal Nye's term on the Building Board of Appeals will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Cal Nye was first appointed to a partial term on this board, January 11, 2007, and this reappointment will be his sixth consecutive term. Myself, council members Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending the reappointment of Cal Nye for a term with a renewal date of September 5, 2017.
All right, any comments?
I don't know if he's here.
Mr. Nye, is he here?
Don't see him.
Not here? Okay, any other questions, comments, motions, promotions, emotions?
I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to reappoint Cal Nye to the Building Board of Appeals to a term with a renewal date of September 5, 2017 by voice vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. That passes. We move on to consideration of approving the reappointment of Jim Pape to the Building Board of Appeals. Any comments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I do. On September 5, 2015, Jim Pape's term on the Building Board of Appeals will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Jim Pape was first appointed to a partial term on this board on October 8, 2009, and this reappointment will be his fourth consecutive term. Myself, council members Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending the reappointment of Jim Pape for a term with a renewal date of September 5, 2017.
All right, any comments?
I don't think he is here either. He wasn't marked in our documents. You know, we're just really lucky that we have people willing to serve and we'd be negligent if we didn't say that. I know we say it every time, but as you saw earlier with one of our volunteers, they make this community hum. They make this community a special place to be, so we're just very delighted that they're willing to continue to serve. And at that, Mayor, if you're ready for a motion?
I think we are, yes.
Our motion to reappoint Jim Pape to the Building Board of Appeals to a term with a renewal date of September 5, 2017 by voice vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second. Diane, would you call the vote?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. That passes also. We also see consideration of approving the reappointment of Ron Owsley to the Building Board of Appeals. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yes, I do. On September 5, 2015, Ron Ows- On September 5, 2015, Ron Owsley's term on the Building Board of Appeals will also come due for renewal. He submitted a renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Ron Owsley was first appointed to a partial term on this board on April 10, 2014, and this reappointment will be his second consecutive term. Myself, council members Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending the reappointment of Ron Owsley for a term with a renewal date of September 5, 2017.
I'll second that. Never mind, I'm sorry.
Not that, we're sorry.
I was... No, I was...
Make a motion.
Go ahead. Want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I wanted to make it up.
Motion to reappoint Ron Owsley to the Building Board of Appeals to a term with a renewal date of September 5, 2017 by voice vote.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Marty. Would you call the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Mayor Skug?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate that. It seems like we're lucky enough to get the best people unless our recruiting efforts are superior. I don't know which.
A little both, probably.
Probably a little of both, because we do get the best people.
Indeed.
Okay, we're going to D, consideration of approving the purchase of Powell E-Pro Emergency Valve Shut-Off Systems and Spare Parts based on the lowest quote in the amount of $99,961.96. Neil, you're up.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a request to purchase some chlorine equipment. They are emergency shut-off valves, and we install these at our well sites on the chlorine cylinders so that if a leak develops, the equipment there will sense the chlorine gas and will automatically shut the cylinder down so that we don't have a long-term exposure or risk of chlorine getting out into the environment. So we've purchased a couple of these over the last couple of years. This 10 will bring us up to a total of about 17. We're going to purchase a few more next fiscal year, and we'll have all of our wells equipped with this equipment. So I guess if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions, anyone?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay, good.
We currently have some of the best water available in this area, and this will help us to stay that way. And I certainly see the need, and I applaud us for continuing to stay ahead of this. So thank you very much.
Any other comments?
No, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Powell E-Pro Emergency Valve Shut-Off Systems and Spare Parts based on the lowest quote in the amount of $99,961.96 as outlined in the fiscal analysis by voice vote. Mr. Mayor, happy to second that motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
And Mayor Skug?
Yes, that moves. Neil, go for it. Okay, we're going to number E, consideration of approving an amendment to a town engineer agreement with Davin Associates to provide professional design and construction administration services in the amount of $27,840 for the Crossroads Water Main Installation Project CIP W-378. Neil, you're up.
Yes, sir, thank you. We actually talked about this at a work study not too long ago, and so we're bringing this forward for design agreement with Davin Associates. We're basically putting a replacement water line out in front of the Crossroads Shopping Center, and I think I mentioned that we had lost the ability to use that line a number of months ago. It is significantly deep, and we need to just put in a new water line there, a brand-new one, and so this is the start of the process, get Dave on board to do the design, and then after we get that, we'll be coming back to you with hopefully an award of a construction project to do that work a little bit later.
Okay, any questions, comments?
We're glad to make a motion.
Laura, go ahead.
Motion to approve this amendment to the town engineer agreement with Davin Associates, Inc., to provide professional design and construction administration services in the amount of $27,840 for the Crossroads Water Main Installation Project CIP W-378 by voice vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, Diane, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Mayor Skug?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
And that passes. Neil, you're ready to go on that one, too. We'll move on to number F, consideration of approving an amendment to the town engineer agreement with Davin Associates to provide for professional design and construction administration in the amount of $11,800 for the 7th Street Water Main Installation Project CIP Number W-350. Neil?
Yeah, so this is actually a very small water project, and what we're proposing to do here is to connect two 12-inch diameter water mains, one that runs down First Street and one that runs down Second Street. Both of these are south of 69, and currently both of those mains are long dead-end mains, and so we're trying to provide some redundancy if we have a water outage somewhere and we have to shut a valve off. Right now, we could be shutting off a whole bunch of businesses because we don't have a secondary feed into that area, so we're going to put a little jumper in there. 7th Street, if you're not familiar with where that is, it's south of Highway 69, and it's parallel to and west of Glassford Hill Road, so if you know where the High Noon Shooting Parlor is, and there's another building just to the east of that where there's, I think, a pet headquarters and a furniture, so there's a very narrow road between those buildings, and that's where this water line is going to go.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just thought I'd make a comment that all three of the items we've talked about have been in our budget this year, so it's something that we've thought out, and again, we appreciate the fact that we're following through on our plans as far as the work plan. So based on that, I'd be more than happy to make a motion.
I think we're ready.
Motion to approve this amendment to the town engineer agreement with Davin Associates, Incorporated, to provide professional design and construction administration services in the amount of $11,800 for the 7th Street Water Main Installation Project CIP Number W-350.
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second. Diane, would you call the vote?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Skug?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have those upgrade projects, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone got a comment? Yes, ma'am, come on up. It's good to see you. Appreciate your coming. If you can pull that microphone down a little bit. It's flexible. Give it a good pull. It may not stay there, but you can hold it.
Does it stay?
I think you have to hold it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Cheryl St. Charles, and I've come before you tonight to address some concerns that I have. I live in Prescott Valley in the Mingus West Development. I've been, I'm here this evening to discuss why Prescott Valley has not met some of the requirements to maintain their streets in Mingus West Development. I have lived in this address for 13 years, and there have been only three oil and gravel applications used for these streets. In front of my home and other homes, there are multiple cracks over four to five years old that the city has sealed only, and some of these streets have now concave structure problems now. This problem with just sealing the cracks is that after six months of coming out and sealing, they disappear. Water erosion washes them out, and the cracks become deeper. I have noticed that over several times in the past few years, we have done new construction on Robert Road. I've also noticed other streets in the town of Prescott Valley that have been consistently been getting recapped, and they seem to have forgotten about us that live in Prescott Valley at Mingus West. Initially, I started inquiring into this matter at the end of June this year of 2015 with the manager of Prescott Valley, Alex Romero, in the Public Works Department. I had several, I'd left several calls with no responses back. I then called Lee Duke, the mayor's executive assistant, which I would like to personally thank right now for advocating on my behalf, and she was a tremendous help in getting my responses from Alex Romero. When Mr. Romero called me back, he stated that July 1 was the date that the Prescott Valley should receive its funding from the state. Mr. Romero then stated he was aware for the past several years that the residents in Mingus West Development had been very patient with the town government to maintain the streets in Mingus West, and that he would come out in July sometime to see the streets himself. To this day, there has not been anything done. I would like to have a definite timeline given in a letter or an email to when the streets in Mingus West Development will be properly maintained. I wish to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the council member for allowing me to voice my concerns at this time.
Thank you, and we welcome your concerns, so thank you so much. Yes, I'm sorry. Larry?
Just as an update on that, Mayor, we've had the inspectors from Public Works go out to Mingus West, and in fact, adjacent to your property, apparently, there's a fire hydrant where there have been a number of water trucks, private sector water trucks that are water haulers that go ahead and sell water to those that have well problems or whatever. And Alex Romero and others have gone out, and there's going to need to be some fairly major repair at that location because there has been some settlement because of the heavy use of that fire hydrant by water haulers. So that will be done, but more importantly than that, you're going to have in the first work study of October, a staff proposal coming to you to deal with the real problem. The real problem is, as you are well aware, over the last seven years, we have gone through significant recession, and we have any number of roads throughout Prescott Valley that are in dramatic need of maintenance that has been deferred because of the economy. And we do have a proposal for you to consider, and that will be in October, but actually hearing that you've had three different maintenance seals over the last 15 years is actually rather good compared to other parts of town as it relates to a residential street. Okay, you are exactly correct when you say that you've seen the Navajos, the Robert Roads, and the Glassford Hill Roads, and the Florentines and the Lakeshores getting more attention, and there's a reason for that. Those are collector roads that are getting in excess of 6,000 vehicles per day, where your basic residential street in town is 200 vehicles per day. And so there is some rationale for that, and there is a maintenance schedule that we have in place so that there is fairness to all the residential streets, and it's just been delayed. We tried to do it on a five-year rotation, and that is now stretched out to about a nine-year rotation, and we need to fix that, so.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. And another party, I think, wants to... I think another party wants to come up, too. Thank you, Ms. St. Charles. Welcome, we're glad to see you. And you'll have to pull that, you have to pull it down. That's right.
I have some photos. May I bring them up for you to see? Is that okay? Let me start that in?
If you'll bring them over here, I'll distribute them for you. Thank you.
Thank you for this time. I do appreciate it.
For the record, we'll need your name, too.
Oh, my name is Robin Boykin.
Robin, say it again.
And my name is Robin Boykin, and I live in Prescott Valley.
Okay.
I'd like to ask if you wouldn't mind just stepping into my shoes for just these few minutes, perhaps that you will have some compassion on my distressing predicament. Eight years ago, when we walked onto our property, onto our home, we looked out, and it was just a spectacular view that we fell in love with. And we walked out, and we looked, and it was this beautiful park, and we just knew it was safe, that no one would ever build there because it's a park. We never received any notification of any kind. We had no idea that this was happening to us until we were awakened at 6:15-ish in the morning to the sound of the workers. My husband happened to be home from work that day, and because he was called for jury duty, he walked out to our fence and asked, "What are you doing?" "We're putting up a cell tower." At that moment, our tranquility disappeared. We have had a realtor in, one that is experienced with cell towers, and she did confirm that we have lost between $15,000 and $20,000 on our home. We can get into other things, but I guess we're looking for just some type of relief from the city and Verizon. I, as you might have seen through in the stack, there is a picture of some pine trees, and if we could have maybe some say in what the shrubs might look like that go around the fence, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
O-I-K-E-N?
I-N.
O-I-K-I-N?
B-O-I-K-I-N, like Boykin.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. And you didn't tell us your address, not your address, but your location. Don't give us your address.
It's viewpoint.
That's good enough there. Thank you so much.
We are directly, it is, you'll see our backyard, I just have to find the tower.
We appreciate your comments. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Sally Davidson. I live here in Prescott Valley.
Good evening. My name is Sally Davidson. I live here in Prescott Valley, and I am here tonight to bring your awareness to a issue that I just became recently aware of, and it's the monarch butterfly migration. They migrate in the spring and in the fall, and they do come through Prescott Valley. And after becoming aware of the milkweed that grows on many of the town-owned, it grows in the floodplains mainly, and their migration is unique in all the world for the monarch butterflies. They're the only butterfly that, the butterfly that usually only will live for 30 days can live up to nine months while it's completing this phase of its migration. So I'm here to hope that you will support me, just to introduce the issue tonight and hopefully get the town to not mow the fields until mid-October, when they'll be done migrating down through to Mexico is where they're headed this time of year. And this is the Methuselah generation, they call it, where they do live nine months. And these butterflies that you're looking at, I took in a field near my house, and so I called up the code enforcement officer and asked him if there was anything he could do about the mowing so early because they were mowing the fields. And he said, "Well, you'll have to take it to the council," and that's why I'm here. And I'm going to come back, maybe, probably before springtime, with some, you know, concrete things to ask of you, but I just want to make you aware of this issue and hope that we can join forces here with the community garden. I'm going to talk to some of their members and get to know them and make Prescott Valley a monarch-friendly town. So thank you very much for your time.
This is interesting. You say we're mowing too early, and others have complained we're mowing too late, so.
Well, who says we're mowing too, for the monarchs?
No, I thought you said we're mowing too early.
We're mowing too early for the monarchs.
And others complain we're not mowing early enough, so I don't know.
Well, if we could just focus on the, I noticed that most of the milkweed grows in the floodplains, and your GIS Larry Prentice, he's the one who recommended that I can...
Man, by the way.
Pardon?
He's a great guy, by the way.
Yes, he was very supportive, and so was Fernando Gonzalez, or, yeah, they were both very supportive, and I'm excited. I was excited if, I didn't know we even had monarchs here in Prescott Valley, and I'm really excited to maybe make some areas of town that are like little butterfly preserves where they don't mow. Could be a, you know, really interesting thing for people who live here to become aware of as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
There, if I could, I'd like to recommend that you talk to one of our employees, John Munderlow. I think you have a really great opportunity in the Awafria floodplain, which completely surrounds the town of Prescott Valley. And John Munderlow is the operator for our recharge basins that may be able to assist in your goals.
Okay, Munderlow?
Yeah, I'll give you his phone number in a minute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Sally, I guess?
Yes, Sally.
Really appreciate that.
Oh, thank you very much.
You take real good care and stay...
You too. I'll be talking to you hopefully before springtime.
Wonderful. We'd appreciate that. Thank you so much. Anyone else? I think we've just about run out of audience here now. Do you want those pictures back?
No, you may keep them.
Okay. Okay, there's one more item that everybody hates, and that's adjournment. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion second. Okay, with a motion to adjourn in a second, Diane, would you call the roll? Mike Whiting made the second.
One moment, Mayor. I'm playing ketchup over here.
You're playing ketchup? Okay.
Can we try some mustard? No.
Mayor Skug.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman.
Yes.
Councilmember Nye.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Whiting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Never got one. If I did, I didn't see it. How do we shut these things off, Diane?